Okay, so this is Sarah Wolf calling to order the virtual May 4th meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. Thank you to everyone who is joining us tonight and to 1623 Studios for posting the meeting for us. And we begin with, oh, I see there is somebody in the chat. Oh, the chat says that Annie got her second vaccine today, which is Annie, that is not an appropriate use of the chat, but congratulations. Is there anybody who is hoping to make a public comment? Please put your name and address in the chat. Looks like we have no public comment unless there's anybody on the phone who is hoping to make a public comment. Okay. So no public comment. I have a little chairman's report. School has been back in session full time for a few weeks now, and by all reports, things are going very well. Regular business is underway, and we look forward to hearing about progress on the Essex Playground, the new elementary school building in Manchester, and improvements to our technology across the district. Tonight, we will also hear about some more typical year end activities at the high school. Also, we are starting to plan for next year and moving forward into the future with our strategic planning process. But before we move ahead with our business meeting, I must take a few moments to recognize the contributions of Annie Cameron. Tonight is Annie's last meeting. When I was considering a move to Essex about 11 years ago, my real estate broker put me in touch with Annie. She's really involved in the community, and she will be able to answer all of your questions about the schools. Of course, this was true because at the time Annie had four children in the district and was serving as president of the PTO. It took me a while to learn that Annie is actually the beating heart of our community. Sure, she serves on the Board of the Manchester Essex Education Fund and on the Town of Essex Strategic Planning Committee. She was on the Building Committee for the middle and high school and is currently on the Building Committee for the new Manchester Memorial School. And I don't even know how many years she has contributed to the school committee. But in addition to being a dedicated public servant, Annie is at work behind the scenes. For example, during COVID, she worked with a team of volunteers to prepare and deliver meals to families in need. She does so much more that no one really even knows about. If there is a good deed done in Essex, you can bet that Annie's behind it. We will surely miss Annie's presence on the school committee, and we appreciate all of the time and effort that she has given and continues to give to our schools and our communities. So thank you, Annie, and we look forward to your continued mentorship and support in the years ahead. I can't see Annie's face, though. I'm sure she's smiling and appreciating all of my comments.
Thank you. That's very kind.
We would be giving you a standing ovation if we were all there in person, for sure.
Just send cash.
Do you want to say anything, Annie?
Sure. I mean, I, I, um, I feel very proud of the work that we do as a community, I mean, as a committee. And I've been doing this since Liam was, I was pregnant with Liam, so that's more than 22 years we started on regionalization. So, you know, it's been a long haul, and I think it's a good time for change. You know, this is a time for new folks to come in and decide what they want out of a district. And I feel very well-served by the district. It's helped me get four kids out into the world, and they're all doing pretty well. So thanks to Pam and Avi and the administrative team, all of the people who've worked for the administration and the teachers. I mean, those teachers helped me raise my kids, so I feel very appreciative of that. And I've loved the people that I've worked with, and most of them have become very close friends. So I've been very lucky and, you know, I'm very proud of what we've built, and I want new folks to come in and build what they need. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, fortunately, Annie's still going to be in town, and she'll be getting lots of phone calls from us in the future. So, um, we, Lucas, do we have a student report?
Yep, I'm here.
Awesome.
All right. So yeah, I hope everyone's doing well. Happy May. It's officially AP exam season, so students who are enrolled in the AP curriculum will be taking their AP exams in about two weeks. So, you know, as exciting as May can be, it's a pretty stressful month for AP students. And so just moving along here, the spring sports season officially started, I believe, last Monday. And so that is currently underway. The junior class is running a flower sale fundraiser. So if you're interested in both purchasing some lovely flowers that are perfect for Mother's Day, which is this coming Sunday, and supporting our class, you can place your orders before this Thursday, the 6th. And I'll put some additional information on how exactly to do that in the chat box. But with regard to in the in-person learning situation, I think that at this point, there's a good amount of students who have returned to full in-person learning. You know, between students who are in-person, students who are remote initially, it was, you know, pretty much split half and half. But now I definitely think that overall there are slightly more students who are in-person. I'm sure, you know, more people will gradually return to in-person, to in-person learning. I know that for me personally, I'm waiting until after I finish my AP exams, and then I'll be returning to in-person learning. I think that other students are planning on doing the same thing. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. You know, today's May 4th, so we're looking at just over six weeks until the very end of a crazy school here that I think, you know, both students and faculty can't wait for.
Yeah. Thank you, Lucas. Six more weeks. That's crazy.
Right.
All right. Does anybody have questions for Lucas? Lucas, how many APs are you taking?
I'm taking six, so I'll be taking six exams.
That's a lot. Okay, well, good luck. Don't, you know, study, but don't, don't study too hard.
Right, yeah.
I have a quick question for Lucas. Lucas, what's the word on the street among your friends, student body about the vaccine for your age group?
Yeah, so I think that, I mean, I think most of, I think the majority of my friends have gotten at least their first dose of the vaccine. You know, a lot of people are really, really happy about it. You know, I really can't speak for like the entire student body because I don't really, I don't really have a sense, I guess, of like how, how many students have been vaccinated, I guess. It's just, you know, I know like if my friends have or, but yeah, so.
Would you say it's a generally positive vibe? People are intending to do it, or it's?
Yeah, I definitely think so. Yeah.
Good. Thanks.
Thanks, Lucas. All right, we'll move forward with the consent agenda. We only have warrants tonight. We don't have any minutes just because our clerk has been really busy, but she promised to get them all to us by next meeting. But we are looking at warrants numbers 1041, 1042, 1043, and 1044. I have a motion for the approval of the acceptance of the warrants.
So moved.
I'll second Shannon.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I will do a roll call. Eric?
Yeah.
Annie?
Yep.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Good, and I'm a yes.
Can I just ask one question of Avi?
Always.
So it looked like there was a lot of like filter stuff. And I'm just wondering, you know, the HVAC and kind of air quality questions. And how much has that added to our budget, or is that been pretty stable? You know, now that that's become such a concern, not that we didn't always have good air, but just, you know, I know now we're much more careful about it.
You know, I don't think it's going to be a significant future cost. The one thing that we're doing now is moving to more frequent changes to something I believe it's quarterly currently based on the guidance. And also based on the fact that, you know, with smaller particular filters, they catch more stuff, which is what they're designed to do. So for that reason, you want to change it more frequently. But that's something we're doing now as part of our COVID costs. I would say filters overall are one of the easier numbers to swallow in our COVID costs. You know, they're some, they're not significantly big ticket items, but, you know, they're there.
Yeah.
HVAC costs that, you know, we spent were a little greater on some of the things like rebalancing and, and, you know, consultants and that sort of thing.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions about the warrants? All right, moving on with subcommittee reports.
I don't think we had a building committee meeting between this meeting and last, did we?
I don't think so.
We did?
We did. I thought the last meeting was concrete.
I think we met last on 4/6, and then we had a meeting the following Tuesday of the Building Committee. But I think it was a very brief 30-minute business check-in without much movement forward.
Right, that's right. It was very thorough, but efficient. Just like our project, which is on time and on budget.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing we did that night was confirm with the school committee had discussed in that the signing, the name of the school would not change, but the sign would have added to it an MERSB school.
Right, and we communicated that out to the collaborative group as well.
Yep.
Which brings us to the next thing, report.
Yeah.
Did you, did you want to report out on that one, Shannon?
Sure, why not? I think that, I feel like that was really strangely short. And I think if memory serves, as you said, we pointed out that signage and the wording on that signage to the collaborative group, and we discussed the fiber loop, really. I think that was it, wasn't it, Pam? Or am I missing something?
No, that was it. It was really just a check-in in case anything had changed. We confirmed it hadn't. We're set for the May 15th town meeting. Essex is first this year, which is not typical. And that was it. We were done in 45 minutes.
Yeah, and our town meeting is May 15th, so people who are listening in in Essex should be ready to go to town meeting to vote on school budget and planning board articles.
And we're going to talk about the fiber line in a later report, so we'll get into that for everyone's benefit who's listening.
When is the Manchester town meeting, just since we're on this?
It is Monday, June 21st, 6:30 on the field.
Thank you.
With a rain date of 6:23.
And does everybody know that school committee usually goes to each other's town meetings and sticks around for the budget and then sometimes heads home and sometimes watches the show?
Yeah, just FYI.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're really there for one another, heckle the people sitting up on the podium. Having been a podium sitter many years myself, I appreciated all the heckling and all the candy thrown at me, so thanks.
So remind me again, when is Manchester's election?
18th, May 18th.
So we'll want, oh, so we'll want to make sure we communicate that out to whoever's coming in.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
That's all she wrote for those two.
Um, I don't know that the Policy Committee had a chance to meet, but we did have some drafts of other donation policies to look at in our packet. Does anybody want to lead the discussion on that? I'm looking at you, Pam.
I'll lead the discussion by asking a question, which is, was there anything in the samples from other districts that was of interest to you that you'd like us to follow up on? We had every intention of meeting. There were just some contributing factors that didn't allow us to get together. I'll share with the group that what I found was that by far the most common policy was the MAS C recommended policy, which I think does address what some of our concerns are, particularly in the situation, which is that it puts in the school committee's hands any donations or in-kind gifts that are going to have an impact on the physical plant. It requires those to be pre-approved by the committee. So if you didn't have a chance to look at the policies, if you just comment now, you can look at them at your leisure and then maybe send us some feedback, send the policy heads some feedback, and we can incorporate it and come with a full draft for next session.
Can I chime in real quick on this? As I was reading the Medway, some of the language around the Medway policies jumped out at me as being particularly appropriate. It talks specifically about, let me find it. Disproportionate advantage in edu, excuse me, I can't speak. Educational opportunity to a specific school or segment of the school population. So we talk about that a lot. And I think that that's pretty appropriate to what we're doing. And I think there was also in maybe the MAS C language too, but also Medway. I can't find it right now because I can't see it well enough.
There we go.
Commentary about maintaining a gift or creating some sort of, you know, funds to maintain a type of gift that would require maintenance for about two years. So I thought that that was kind of interesting. The Medway stuff just kind of jumped out at me as being particularly appropriate to our situation. So that's what I wanted to say.
I think it was the Medway one that also specifically cited that gifts were not accepted for staffing positions.
Yes.
Yeah, they did. I was looking at that too, because I really like the format of the Medway. Bullet points rather than big paragraphs, really easy for people who need to access that if they're trying to look at what it is, to understand what it is. My only concern with that was that there's, you know, they even stipulate things like library books and materials enrichment stuff, things that in our district, our PTOs often supply have to be approved. So I think that there's certainly room for work on that, but I really like the structure of it. And like you, Shannon, I noticed that specific language about what we're dealing with here as well.
So would it work if we looked at blending the NASC template with the Medway language and pull that together as a draft for next session?
I think so.
Yeah, for some reason, I haven't been looking at the date on ours, but our, our policy goes back to 2004, I believe. So we just haven't looked at it in a long time. Annie, I think your hand is up. Yeah, 2004.
I have a question about, and it's unfortunately, I've not read these thoroughly, but we have situations where we have gifts from, you know, someone may pass away, and someone wants to make a memorial garden or bench or something like that. Is that different than what we're talking about in these policies, or does it fall within those policies?
We also have a memorials policy that talks about, and we pulled that up earlier this year when there was discussion about the bench for Gloria Tanner, and we have used it in the past when Joyce Swedberg had passed. So it really just talks about not creating permanent memorials and having them be mobile. So when you do something like the building project, you're not destroying something that's a keepsake. So we do have a separate policy on that. We can certainly look at it. Is that something that you feel needs updating?
No, I was just thinking about strategy. So if I wanted to donate something, you know, how would I, how would I frame it so that it could happen? But it sounds like the, the memorial donations are something that is, we're not committing to its permanence. Is that kind of the gist behind that?
Yes.
Or that it's portable?
And I would say we don't need to complicate it. I think what I'm seeing in the policies is we can be either very prescriptive of what we will accept and won't accept, or we can have, I think, what all of the policies have, which is clear language that says a policy concept, especially when it has to do with the design of a building or a permanent space. It needs to go through a vetting process of school committee first, not, not to signal that we are not more than willing and open and happy to take contributions, but there are some that move to such a scale that has an impact on the physical plant. So I think we can combine the two. Teresa?
On that, would it be appropriate, the, it's difficult to find what you need in the policies sometimes. So would it be all right to include just a line that says, if this is a memorial, please see section XYZ, so that if somebody is looking to do this and they, they turn to the gift section and not even know?
Okay, yep.
That's a good idea.
We could even put underneath, like if you're looking at the screen, after it says first reading, there's usually a lot of blank space at the bottom of the page. You could just put related policies and just have a listing of, you know, there's the fundraising policy, there's the naming policy. So people know where to go if it starts to sneak into one of those areas. Any other feedback on this?
Sorry, Pam, I talked over you.
Go ahead. I was just asking if there's any additional feedback that people want us to consider.
Me too.
So I'm just going to point out the elephant in the room. There is a group in Essex that wants to build the kind of accessory loop and benches and stuff around the playground. Someone called me and asked if they could get some time on the agenda to talk about that. So I know that you guys know about it, just in terms of timing, we would want to have the policy nailed down prior to approving that effort. Is that, am I correct in that?
I think that in our goal, weren't we, we were hoping to be able to finalize things tonight, but again, just circumstances didn't work out. Is that, am I reading that wrong, Pam?
No, I do think there's enough in this first policy in that the school committee has been clear that they want to approve the design, that you could probably run things on parallel tracks.
Okay.
Because if, if we don't get back until the 16th and have the policy approved, then that sets that group, you know, even further back in the timeline. July kind of becomes a dead month where not a lot gets done. So I think if the committee's comfortable, I'm looking at our current policy. It's up on the screen right now. I, I think you've made clear what your wishes are. We could, we could ask the group to bring the design forward for approval at the May 16th meeting. And that way there, you can make a determination whether or not you have enough information. I think the site's coming along. You'll hear a little bit more about that later in the meeting. It may have a sense of whether or not it is the appropriate next step, and you can talk about design scope and budget. In that way there, if we need a second meeting to kind of finish off that discussion, we at least have the June 2nd meeting to do so. If people are comfortable with it, I think you have enough to go forward.
That sounds good. I think that group is probably just, they need specifics on exactly what they need to present so that we can approve it. So maybe whoever that is could reach out. I think maybe, I mean, I would be happy to meet with them, but I think I need like either Pam and maybe Jason and Avi to sit down and figure out exactly what we need so we have enough information so that we can feel comfortable approving it.
Sure. If everyone's comfortable here, I would recommend it's a design to be reviewed and approved, scope of the work and projected budget. So.
Time, scope, budget, and how about the person who's going to complete the work, like contractor or something like that?
I think that's what they're looking for donations for. I think they're looking for donated work, but I'm not, I'm not certain, and I don't want to speak for them.
Just to clarify that last point, there's a difference between who actually performs the work and who manages the work. So I think it would probably be best to fall under the auspices of the district in terms of overseeing it. I don't think anyone's really debated that, but I think it's clearly, because I think with Jason running the whole project to begin with, I think it's important that he can see all the pieces of the puzzle.
Yeah.
And then I think the last piece is just the issue that we talked about the last meeting was the extent to which potential fundraising opportunities would or wouldn't cover the budget proposal and whether there would be any residual to the district. I think we, I think we had a vote on that, but I can't recall if it was a vote or just discussion.
I just want to make note of my, my objection to the design that has the bissection, you know, that's the path that bisects the playground. I don't think we should do that, but otherwise it was great.
I think they changed that.
They should come with an updated design then.
Avi, can I ask you to just create an outline of what we need in terms of a proposal that we can get, get out to them?
Missed the beginning. Was that directed to me? Yes, if so. I couldn't hear who you were asking.
Yes, it was, and thank you. Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Avi. All right, anything else on the donations policy or any other policies?
I have, I have a quick question on that. As we're talking about this, as it relates to the language in the Medway document, if there is money left over from a gift such as, you know, creating more, you know, bettering the existing design, if there's money left over, can that be put toward maintenance? Or am I getting too far down the rabbit hole on this?
I think we own maintenance of whatever goes in place regardless.
I think if there was leftover money, we'd go back to the group and figure out what they wanted to do with the extra money. It seems like it would be pretty easy to spend a little extra money.
Wait a minute.
Or whatever.
Are we talking about our money or their donated money?
The donated money.
Okay, good.
Like if they, if somebody wanted to donate $1,000 for a bench, and it turned out that the bench only cost $800, I would think that we would meet with the donor and find out if they just wanted their $200 back or if they wanted to get a fancier bench, for example.
And MGL generally. Yeah, generally, MGL requires, this was in the policy, it was referenced indirectly, but the one Pam had on the screen. If a donor donates something to a specific purpose, the funds need to be used for that specific purpose. And so Sarah's point's spot on, you know, if there's extra money, either it gets specified upfront by the donor in their letter, or you have to, it's best practice to go back to the donor.
All right, so let's move on. That's probably enough from the policy, policy section. And then negotiations didn't meet because everybody's back at school and we're cranking along under our memorandum of agreement. So things are good, and we're ready for Pam's report.
Wrong, Mike.
It was profound what I just said. I just wanted to say that I'm going to echo the sentiments that both Sarah and Lucas started the meeting with on a couple accounts. First, it's starting to feel, I don't want to use the word normal because I don't think we'll ever be back to normal fully, but post-vacation with everyone fully in person, the beat in the rhythm of the school day and the school year feels better than it's felt in a very long time. So I, I'm finding it very upbeat. There's a lot of life on campus, and I think everyone's really adapted to being back to in-person. And I think we're going to end on a very optimistic note. You'll hear shortly about some of the activities we have planned for the end of the year. So really good energy about the building. But to Lucas's point, I think everybody is exhausted. So the optimism's carrying the day, but people are very tired, and it's been an incredible effort this year. So I will start with a shout out to our amazing team of educators for everything that they've done, what they do in a typical year, never mind how they've really pushed themselves to meet kids' needs this year. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, and there's a ton of activities going on sponsored by our PTOs and our principals to just give them shout outs and show them the respect that they deserve. So we cannot say thank you enough to the entire team of educators for everything that they've done this year. And then just my thank you to Annie. She was on the committee when I started, left and came back to the committee, and it's really been wonderful working with you through the years. You'll be missed. You've always been an incredible support and a very truthful voice and someone we could, I could always count on for giving me very honest feedback. So I'm sure you'll still be there to give it if I ring up, but.
Don't change your cell phone number.
You'll be missed, truly, at these meetings, but I have a feeling you're going to find your way to some other great public service in Essex, and we'll be. to some other great public service in Essex and we'll be able to continue to work together. So thank you. So the COVID report, this is another piece that's feeling like it may not be as relevant as it once was. It's a little bit of a broken record, so I'm going to go really quickly through it. And if people have questions, I'm happy to go back to it. Our metrics are in green, both Essex and Manchester are in green. So the conditions within the two communities continues to support full in-person. And we continue to track positive COVID positives and close contacts, and those numbers remain extremely low. We are still at 1% of the student population throughout the course of the year has been reported positive, about seven and a half percent of the, of the teaching staff. And I, I think the zero contact, zero close contacts teacher to student and student to staff is where we're drawing our conclusion that, you know, through everyone's efforts, and this is where the nurses get a special shout out just in terms of the contact tracing that's been done and staying on top of Medbot and really just being proactive in trying to keep, keep COVID out of our schools. We've really been able to contain it. So we've got two months to go. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to let up on it yet, but I think we've done a really nice job of mitigating throughout. A side note on Medbot, if you answered it this week, you notice we've cut it down to two questions. So the travel mandate turned to a travel advisory and we got through April break and there's really no teeth in it anymore. So we removed, we removed those questions. So it's a much quicker report in, in the morning. We're really just trying to make sure if people are symptomatic or not feeling well, that they stay home and get tested so we can keep our numbers low. Our pool testing program is, is moving along. We've had no positives in the month of, I should say, the month of April, and we've only had one to date. We do have declining interest in the, in the students. We started at about 50% and the nurses report that we're about down to about 250 participants now. It is free to us. We're going to continue it through the year. We have a very high level of participation from the faculty, but we'll make a determination over the summer whether it is necessary to continue or in our interest to continue next year, particularly if there's a cost benefit analysis to be done. I do think it's, I'm glad we were able to have the, the resources provided to us to do it because it's giving us, given us a sense of what it can and can't do. So more to come on that. This is just our monthly chart reporting out our positives and close contacts. You see those numbers remain small and all of the close contacts remain externally derived. So that's a positive. Just a glimpse of our map, the region is looking, looking pretty good. Even the yellow communities, I think we've all learned to live with it now. At one time, any red or yellow was somewhat shocking, but with more and more people being vaccinated and all of us just becoming accustomed to accommodation and moving back outside, I don't, I haven't heard much concern raised about the levels in the communities. So that seems to be wind in our sails. And then staffing, I think we're stabilizing now that we've gone through the bulk of the vaccinations. That was a huge hit for us and the principals really were scrambling. I think I'll never talk to the principals where they're not concerned about having enough stuff, good, you know, in a typical year and in this year particularly. But now that we're on the backside of the COVID vaccinations, I think it's, we're down to a more typical, people calling in sick, maybe a bit heightened in, in who we ask to stay home, but we have it covered to the end of the year. The program, I think I mentioned before, you know, we're a little bit in, in different places and different schools and at different grade levels, but for the most part, I'm not hearing tremendous, I'm not hearing a lot of feedback that we haven't been able to deliver on the majority of our curriculum, scope and sequence. Julie will be here on the first of June to give you an end of year kind of, not that we have it, but the kind of a learning loss report and analysis of where we think we're ending the year and how our kids fared throughout with our program. And budget, I've just kept in yellow because it's, it's not finalized yet. No change since the last report, but we will do a final calculation in June to see if our estimates hold. We're still looking at about a $960,000 use of reserves to manage the cost of the year with about $650,000 coming in from CARES and ESSA reimbursement. So the state of the union in terms of COVID and in-person learning is strong and it's becoming less of a daily conversation and concern. Couple of other items, and then we can go back to questions. Some of the normal activities that are taking place or we're trying to plan for the future. Again, as a reminder, when we went into COVID lockdown, we were right on the verge of hosting our first World Cafe focus group in response to a survey we did back in 2020. We had to kind of redo the entire process and we had the survey out for a couple of weeks. At last count, we had 700 people responding, predominantly parents, but about 40 or 50 community members and about 100 students as well. In that, we did, we got a report out on the 28th, which was our CEF rep. So CEF is Creative Ed Foundation. We are working with a data, market analyst, data market analyst who is processing the data and providing us with the feedback. She gave the steering committee its initial look on April 28th. That's going to be followed by a more detailed report. And on the 25th of May, she will be with us as well to preview that for the full committee. Tomorrow night, if you haven't signed up, please sign up for one of the two sessions. This is our second community engagement piece. We're going to be holding, it's called World Cafe, but they are focus groups. So we're going to be grouping people in teams of four. There'll be three questions posed to think about the future of our, our, of our learning community, try to assess what achievement looks like and what we think those skills and tools our kids are going to need for the future. And that is going to be put together with the information input from the survey and all of the third-party reviews we've done over the past few years to get synthesized into a couple of things. First, I'll look at our current mission, vision and goal, I'm sorry, mission, vision and core values to see if those still are appropriate, or whether or not they need to be revised in order to help promote the goals and the work that we need to do in the future. We also want to come out of our convening with some high-level target areas that the district improvement team can then go work on over the summer and report back to you on in the fall for approval. So I'm finding this really exciting because it's helping us turn from constant focus on COVID and managing the crisis to thinking about how we can take what we've learned, take what we know works, combine the two together and set a path for the future. So exciting work there and looking forward to our next few meetings in May. Then just a couple of updates with one big shout out to Manchester Essex Regional High School, 23rd, ranked 23rd in the state by U.S. News and World Report for its continued excellence in the area of student achievement. We always stop to say two things. There's more than one measure, and this is just one, and it fluctuates with test scores, and it takes an entire village. So this is, you know, the high school gets the shout out, but it's a K-12 process to get the kids to a point where they can reach this level of success. So it really is an entire community effort. Parents and teachers, and of course, the students first and foremost, have earned this honor together. So many congratulations to the high school. I see a hand raised, so I'm going to share the mic.
No, again, yes, it is a K-12 kind of accomplishment, but I want people, when they look at those numbers, to really look at our graduation rate, which is 100%, and our college readiness rate that ranks much higher than our actual ranking. There's other things that go in there in terms of diversity and free and reduced lunch and things that, that impact those rankings with U.S. News and World Report, but really it's our kids that are just really academically inclined that, that help us really succeed. So thank you to the kids.
Can you help me with what the, the national ranking was? I want to say 624, but I'm not sure I'm remembering correctly.
That's, that sounds about right, but I'm not, I'd have to go back and look. It was in the, the low 600s out of several thousand schools.
And I think that puts us in the top 5%?
Yes. Yes, it does. And I think we're number one on the North Shore.
So, yeah.
Rankings don't matter. Remember that because they, I mean, they don't really talk all about your school culture and everything your school is. And I think sometimes we need to remember that because it's great when you're ranked high, but sometimes, you know, I, I saw some schools this year that, that fell from 11 to 60. And how does that happen in one year? The school didn't change that much in one year. Just the way things got reported got changed. So it's always good to remember that.
Quick question. This is public schools, right? All, all public high schools?
Public schools, charter schools and magnet schools.
Awesome. Awesome. Great job, Tricia. Thank you.
Few more general updates. We've begun the hiring process for fall of 2021. So these are all budget neutral hires, meaning they are retirements or resignations or reorganizations. So that's exciting. And another look to the future, public service message, May 18th, middle high school is going to have a half day due to the election being held at the high school. Tiny bit of history there. Elections in town meetings are traditionally held at the memorial school, but seeing as the memorial school is inaccessible right now, last year we moved the town, the, the town elections and town meetings to the high school. It didn't impact us because we weren't there. So it kind of snuck up on us and we, we realized that we really can't all be in the building and serving lunch and meeting social distancing throughout the day. So the kids will be in in the morning and then heading out at 11:30, I believe is the cut time. So we can facilitate the election. And again, that's just middle high school. Graduation day is coming up on the fourth. You'll hear more about that. And then we're looking at the 16th as the tentative last day of school. I can't imagine much is going to change between now and then to throw us off track, but we've been living through unprecedented times. So who knows what could happen? That's just our school committee schedule from now to the end of the year. A reminder that in 2021, if you, you know, just if you're talking to people and they're still looking for remote learning, we will help them get into a program, but we are not going to be providing remote learning in, in FY22. We are going to go full in on in-person and be prepared for shifting on the continuum should we have conditions that merit the need to go hybrid or remote for any reason. And then I've just, I posted and then everyone can see it up on either Facebook or the blog, some of the key calendar dates for next year. So people can do their planning around the beginning of the school year and the vacation periods with the full calendar coming up for review. Next meeting, it's out with PDC and the association for a final look. And with that, I can turn it back over to you for a question.
Pam, it doesn't appear that there are dates for the February break. That's usually just the, the, the February break starts with the Monday President's Day and that's usually the week, right?
I think it's the 21st through the 25th. It was late this year. So I had put it on here last time if we wanted to consider moving it around, but I think we decided that we're keeping it right where it is. So I will get those actual dates for you. I know they're posted on the blog and Shelley's putting them up on the calendar. So I think it's 21 to 25.
Okay. And it looks like you don't have an April break there either.
Okay. Patriots Day, 18th to the 22nd.
I have two questions.
Yep.
This is Avi, more Avi directed, but have you heard anything from the two towns about CARES or Recovery Act? Money and if they've had their reconciliation of their asks? And I just want to make sure that we continue to ask that question.
I can confirm that we've continued to check in with them about it during the collaboration sessions. There is no specific update yet in terms of what might come back. I think there's an openness to it, but also just a little bit of what we can see because things keep changing. But I think with the closing of the fiscal year, we can certainly see if there is any news to continue into subsequent years. So, so far, no news that is specific.
Follow up on that. If you find out after the close of business, July or June 30th, can you retroactively apply any funds? Or how would that work? Can you do that?
That is on which one, yeah, which funds are being discussed. I think several of them have been extended to go beyond the current fiscal year. I think it's mostly the DESE grants that have specific years that you can use. And even those, you could potentially make an adjustment to move it back. So I think there's so far pretty good flexibility on that. But, you know, a lot, a lot of our, a lot of our costs are, you know, FY21 costs. And so we are going to get that clear so we can get our exit in the fiscal year.
Okay.
And I think some of that, to that last point, will impact any type of final fiscal year. We have typically through the school committee in June, I think it's going to be a little less crystal clear than in a normal year because of the funding streams and we're moving back.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to kind of plant a bug in your ear, Patricia and Pam and everybody. If we were to, you don't have to answer this, if we were to choose the ranking, the ranking, like qualification or criteria, what would they be? Because we always are proud of these kinds of rankings. And then we always say, but we don't want to rely on rankings. But I wonder if we developed our own measure of what we consider a successful school district, not necessarily a successful high school, but what is this, you know, and I know that the vision of the graduate is part of that, but how do we measure up against our own standards, honestly? And, and also not just looking at academic success, but you know, we have a lot of different students and they have different profiles and different measures of success. And it would be great to be able to kind of talk about that in a different way. So that's just something I'm thinking.
I'm with you and I'm looking forward to your comments when we have the convening later in May because I think, I don't know, but I'm, that we are, this is the work of our district. It's almost a paradox because we need to figure out how to balance those two things. And we've been talking about it for a long time because on one hand, I think we have a very strong contingent that sees the value in the traditional concept of education with the traditional measures, but we also recognize the need to be broader, to try to be more innovative and to ensure that we treat the whole child. So it's a balancing act and I think there'll be a lot of conversation about that, that night.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Pam? I know a whole bunch of updates, so I think we could just keep going.
Let's keep going.
Cheryl's actually not able to join us for the CPAC update tonight.
Okay. We have the Essex Tech School Committee appointment. Does anyone want to speak to that? I mean, annually, the school committee is asked to confirm the town moderator's appointment of their town representative to the North Shore Essex Tech School Board. And this year, the nominee is Alva Ingahara, known to all of us. She's a former school committee member here.
Annie wants to say something. Go ahead, Annie.
I would love to speak to Alva's candidacy. I think it's a brilliant idea. Um, you know, Alva served for, I don't know how many years on school committee, six maybe? Was it more, was it more than that, Pam? Also is on school building committee. I think that what I think we all value about Alva is the way she approaches issues. And I think, you know, she would be a tremendous asset on that school committee because she asks really good questions about budget. She asks questions that are from a taxpayer point of view. She is a project manager and so she approaches things in a very kind of, what are we asking for? What's the deliverable? What's it going to cost us? And I think all of us who served with her valued that perspective and her sense of humor and her kindness. So she really does care about kids and education. And I think this is just a perfect, a perfect place for her to serve. So.
I agree. Lucky to have her.
Yep.
I agree with Annie for all those reasons. And also, when I was reading the nomination letter, I saw that she was also a graduate of a. of a vocational high school. And I thought that was another awesome reason to have her on that. So I think it's all great. So thank you, everybody.
Does she have the phone?
No, I don't see her on there. She can watch the recording later and hear all the nice things we say about her.
So do we have to vote on this or we just?
We have to vote on it, don't we?
We do. So do I have a motion to confirm the recommendation for Alva Ingaharo as our representative?
So move Ken, or second and tenth.
I have a second?
Ten seconds.
Annie, seconds, okay, Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Salutely.
Matt?
Yes, yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken? And I'm a yes. So that's a unanimous confirmation of Alva, so.
Buckle up Essex Tech.
She's great, she'll be great, a great asset to that committee. All right, I think Tricia's up.
Hey, everybody, Matt, do you have my slides, Kim?
They are up.
They are up, I don't see them, but I'm going to find them. All right.
Senior Week Activities two thousand and twenty one.
Does anybody else see them? Or is that just me? I can just talk off the top of my head, I don't see them though.
I didn't change them, they're in order as you gave them and they didn't get distorted in the way I saved them. So if you have a copy, you probably go right off of that.
Yeah, I can just do it, I just don't see them, that's all. Does anybody else see them? Do you do?
Uh, yeah, I can see them just fine.
Okay, I must just be in a different form view, that's fine. Um, so we're going to have a number of senior week activities coming up, which we're very excited to celebrate the class of two thousand and twenty one. And we're going to be starting off with a senior party, which is going to be held, our senior prom, there's a few different words, names for it. Oh, there it is, that's going to be held on May twenty eighth, which is our typical prom date on, at Castle Hill. We had actually booked this last spring. And at this time, the senior class is committed to just the senior class going, attending that event. We have a max of a hundred and fifty people according to state guidelines, since it's May twenty eighth and not after May twenty ninth. There's a hundred and twenty seven students in the senior class. And then there will be a number of chaperones, about ten. So that brings us to one thirty seven, which left us to maintaining that only senior class size. There's been a number of requests from different students, you know, my date, the date that I would want to bring goes to Essex Tech, my date that I want to bring goes to Beverly High School, my date that I want to bring goes to Beverly, to St. John's Prep. And unfortunately, we're not able to accommodate that this year, mainly because of the cap on the size, we can't go over. And who decides who is allowed to bring an outside gate, guest and who is not? And then the other obstacle is, you know, this is the Friday before graduation and we're able to kind of have control over our students in terms of completing med bot and other things and having knowledge of their status. Whereas if we go out of our community, we're opening up ourselves to having people from big, from schools that we're not sure what they're doing in terms of COVID coming to our event. So excuse me, I'm sorry, I have a little, a little congestion myself tonight. We will require prereg, preregistration for this event. On Tuesday, June first, the senior class is putting together a beach day at Singing Beach. They'll be providing lunch from Bravo, there'll be chaperones on hand, and they will be distancing throughout the day. On June second, we'll be having a back lorry with the rain date of June third at four P M. It'll be on Highland Field. Seniors will be allowed to have two guests and the guests will need to be preregistered. We'll have spacing of six feet throughout the event. During this night, we will have awards, scholarships, a faculty speaker and performance. It will be live streamed for those who are unable to attend. The two things that I think people love that we're going to not have at that particular event is the slideshow, which if the seniors decide to pull that together, will be sent to families separately. And also, the light, the candle lighting doesn't work outside. We know that from the past in that when the kids leave back lorry with their candles and they go outside, the candles immediately go out. So we won't be having the candlelight lighting, which is too bad. But this event allows for the greatest participation. We go to the next slide?
Thank you.
My husband just brought me water, so. On Thursday, we're going to have the car parade. And last year, we worked collaboratively with Manchester and Essex Police Departments to develop a parade route that did the entire towns. We will be following that same route. We'll be using our same protocols as last year and that seniors may not drive the vehicle. Cars should be decorated and police and fire will lead and monitor the route for student safety. And then the big day is graduation. It's the Super Bowl of high school and that's June fourth. And the rain date is June fifth at noon. Normally, if it rained, we'd move inside, but we're not able to do that. We're planning in accordance with DESE graduation guidelines. Guests must preregister, we'll have five guests per student. Students are going to be spaced on the field six feet apart and family groups will be spaced six feet apart as well. We will be putting restrictions on when people can enter the field and everybody must leave the field at the end of graduation. So those are our plans, I can't talk. And we're really looking forward to celebrating our seniors. If anyone deserves it, they totally do. I wish we could do more, but we're excited to do what we can.
That looks pretty amazing, Tricia, and kudos to you and the kids for putting all those activities together. It sounds like it's going to be a really fun week.
Yeah, the kids really did a great job giving their input and I'm really proud of them. So it's great.
Yeah. Anybody have questions for Tricia?
Hey, Tricia, can you talk a little bit? Oh, I'm sorry to ask you to talk, just quick broad brushstrokes on how prom will go down and what the DESE guidance is for prom and how that would work at a gathering of a hundred and fifty people. I've kind of lost track of, of.
I got my voice back a little bit. So I know, I do, I do need to explain, I do not have COVID. I do have bronchitis and I've been tested like four times in the last like six days for COVID and I definitely don't have that. So I just wanted you to know, I am fine and I'm on the tail end of this. So in terms of the senior prom, prom guidance, they actually ask for schools to try to hold them after graduation. I'm not a big fan of that because we have no oversight of students after graduation and there's a lot of liability there. But given our class size is small, we're able to manage an event of under a hundred and fifty people in line with state guidance prior to graduation. I think it's a good opportunity for the class to come together. Typically, the class goes on the senior trip overnight and that's when they spend their time together and really come together as a class and kids that don't normally talk to each other, talk to each other. And I'm really hopeful that this event, being only the class, will take the event, take the place of that so that the kids really spend time together as a class and enjoy being together with one another and just have fun. You know, they can dance, no slow dancing, but they can dance and they can just really have a good time. So it'll be a mix of a tent, an outdoor dance floor. Castle Hill abides by all the state guidelines. They will require masks throughout the evening except for an eating. Eating will be six kids per table, again, distanced six feet apart.
Can they grind?
There will be no grinding.
No.
If you'd like me to give you an example of the dance rules, something I did at a prior school, you might not want to see that, but yes, I think grinding's passe.
It's called twerking now.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Tricia. Anymore.
Excuse me, sorry.
Thank you, Tricia.
Welcome, thank you.
Feel better.
Oh, I'm good, I'm good, I'm fine.
I just want to cough listening to you, I feel so bad. So Tricia's blazing the trail for the whole team and she's sharing tonight what's going on and the K eight principals are working together to try and put together a similar package of modified events for the end of the year for the fifth grade moving on and the eighth grade moving on ceremonies, field days and their traditional celebrations. So there'll be more to come, hopefully at the May sixteenth meeting about what those June activities will look like for K eight.
He's saying May sixteenth, but I think you mean May eighteenth.
I probably do.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I don't know why I had the sixteen stuck in my.
The last day of school is May sixteenth.
June sixteen.
June sixteenth.
And my last committee is May eighteen, that's why we're getting.
I'm, I'm just off, I prob, and I have May sixteenth everywhere, so, sorry.
Okay.
Anything more for Tricia?
Was there some conversation about student government roles? And I'm happy to talk about that if you'd like.
Yes, so what, yeah, while Tricia's here. So it's come to our attention through the MASC listserv that there's supposed to be a very specific structure for having our student reps. We've always been so lucky with our student reps and it's been so great to have them, and especially Lucas this year, giving us a glimpse into what it's like to be a kid in the high school during COVID. But it seems like we're supposed to be following some, some rules about having a student, an an elected group of students who are the advisory board to school committee and then out of that group, they elect a member of their group to then be the person who comes to school committee. So we were wondering if, if we should set that up. So I'm opening that up, I have, we haven't talked about it as a committee yet, but your thoughts, Tricia?
I think there's some wonderful opportunities to, with this, to kind of revamp, oh, my voice is good, our student council structure to include representatives or an advisory board to, to the school committee. I have four members that are elected to come to my school council, that could be part of that as well. And then we're also looking, we have not done in the past, but we're really looking to have a student council rep become part of the regional student council that meets several times a year at Burlington High School. So I think there's an opportunity here to really revamp our student council structure and to give more student voice into our processes.
I think that's great. And then just to clarify, for, for us as a school committee, we'll just be still seeing the one student who shows up to our meetings, but they'll be getting input then from their larger group and be able to maybe bring more back and forth and be more of a liaison.
Yeah.
And they can be part of the lunch group if we can ever get that back on track for when we do like monthly or every other month meetings with students, they can be part of the core that come, I was thinking.
I think it's a great, I, I think it's great, I think we should just, I mean, I know that we should do it. I'm curious to hear if anybody else on school committee has any thoughts?
Is a student member a voting member?
No, it's just like, no.
Okay.
I mean, it could be more, we could talk about, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but we could talk about having the student participate more in the rest of the meeting. I know that our students are often really busy, so it's kind of nice for them to be able to come give their report and then not stay for the two hours, but, and we're always happy to have Lucas, you know, join in if, if there are comments or questions about things that are happening. But maybe we want to like grow that role just a little bit to include them more in the discussions?
My question was, was because I don't know the history of what we've done in the past, you know, leading up to this past year is, you know, is their interest, right? Is there going to be, I mean, are there kids that are going to be interested in doing this?
Tricia, what do you think?
Um, I think in terms of our traditional, like, idea of student council, we've struggled with that interest, but I think in terms of providing a student voice, we have a large number of students that would really appreciate the opportunity to provide specific feedback to the school committee. I know I found that true definitely on my school council and it's really just creating that culture. I've worked at other schools where the members do sit with the school committee for the entire evening, they do give information or give feedback. And I've worked at other schools where they show up just for the beginning to provide information and then do leave. So there are different structures and I think it's something we can grow and build in time. But with the new, we have a new student council advisor and I think we have a great opportunity at this time.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, I'm all for it. I think we've toyed with the changes on and off through the past twelve, ten, eleven years. And if there's a will and it's a good, I think it kind of syncs up with the work that we have going on too with our future planning and where the voice of the student sits in comparison to the adult voices, I think this is a great opportunity, I really do. So if, yeah, the committees and support, I think it's a great idea.
I think we should go for it. My, I've had children in high school for the last, I mean, whatever, six years and they always tell me that I think I know things because I'm on school committee, but I really don't know anything at all because I'm not in school. So I think we need those kid voices. So Tricia?
One thing I would say is I did ask this new student council advisor to hold off on elections so that we were able to publicize this type of information prior to elections that will happen later in May. They were supposed to happen like this week, but we, we've popped them off so that we can really advertise this opportunity for kids.
Well, thank you, so let's do that and, and get the word out there. I think we should go for it. All right. Um, so Tricia, I think, thank you so much. You should, you can turn off your mic now if you want.
Have a nice meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia.
Okay, Pam.
All right, school choice?
Yep.
This should be quick because we've given you a couple of different updates beginning with our first meeting in March. So tonight, we need to do a formal vote that we will accept school choice. You don't need to vote on the distribution. By the way, the reg is written, I, I would be the one who made the final decision. So let's say, this is what I'm telling you I intend to do, but let's, we get fifty move in tomorrow into K and we can't get those three kids in there, I'll figure out a different way to try to get them in, I'll always come back to you and report. That's just been our practice. But just disclosing to you the game plan. For background, you know that we rely on three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue from school choice incoming. So our goal this year is to try to return all of the students that exited the graduation over the past two years. So our number is seventeen, I've gone to eighteen for a little bit of insurance because sometimes students decline the invitation once we give it to them. And I've run all of the numbers, talked with the principals impacted, and here is our best scenario for the fall. Memorial is going to have three sections at grade one and that's going to allow us to put all six students there. The real positive news in this is with this approach, all sibling applications will be able to be honored. So if you have one in and one still in another school system, we're going to be able to get, get the siblings in this year. And for the first time in a very long time, the numbers at the middle school are starting to come down and we'll be able to place some students there. So if you have questions, I'm happy to go through it, otherwise, it's really just a straightforward vote to accept school choice for FY twenty one, uh, twenty two, sorry.
Pam, is there a number of how many applicants there are?
I believe it's a hundred and thirty.
Thank you.
Yep.
Pam, do you mind just, what was the revenue total each year?
We've, at its height, it was near a million plus, but right now we've been trying to keep it at three hundred and fifty K a year.
And that's how many students?
That's about sixty-five students. What was our peak?
Okay.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
We're really losing you, sorry.
You can't hear me?
Oh, now we can. Better now.
Yep, at the peak, seven hundred and fifty thousand with a hundred and fifty students. And right now, the number we have in our budget is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar offset to the general fund budget coming from school choice.
Is that number per student ever indexed annually? Or has it been roughly five thousand a year for?
It's one of those things. That didn't get updated.
I think, Avi, I think you're really garbled, but then maybe that's just me.
Yeah, so I would say, Ken, the best example of how school choice should work is at the first grade because we have excess capacity. So we have room to take students in and still leave enough room for potential resident move-ins. The place where you wouldn't do it is we're already tight at three, like Memorial, three sections, you're already at twenty. Our benchmark's twenty-two. We'd be pushing the envelope to take students there. If we absolutely had to, we could, but your resident numbers could push you over benchmark and you'd have no recourse. So five thousand's just been the standard because it's not supposed to be, you're supposed to be giving away space that exists, not using it to generate income.
The only watch out concern I guess that I have on this, and this is parochial, my local view, just when I see the number of houses in Manchester that appear to be changing hands and having fear around the if you build it, they will come philosophy that's been advanced around the elementary school. Yeah, I know, I'll pay your license fees later, Shannon. But I guess there's probably no indication on number of real estate transactions or anything we have to, we don't even know if they have kids or where they'd be coming in at.
True. What we did do, Ken, in anticipation that our numbers this year are all wrong because we've got people who are home, people who went to homeschool who really aren't long-term homeschoolers. We have people who pulled out and enrolled in private school. So knowing that our numbers are a little bit shaky for this year, we went back to the October one, Fall nineteen report. So they're a little bit inflated over this year. So there may be spaces where we don't know that there are spaces because the people who went to private are just going to stick it out now for the remainder of elementary. So this is, this is our best educated estimate of where the space is and how we can fill it. So we could be looking at that first grade number and it could be, you know, down at fifteen or fourteen because the resident students just didn't materialize.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about if it's going the other way with, we have extras, but.
I am too. That's where we're going to have to have a hard conversation, probably also about the bigger budget picture.
Yeah.
And maybe.
Thank you, Pam, thank you. Thank you for the answers.
Can I ask you?
I don't know if you can see it on your sheet. Yep, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this because I'm getting other questions about it too. So on this, on this chart where it says the two classrooms and three classrooms, with the gray shading, is that intended to mean those are the grades that are going to have not that number of classrooms?
Correct.
So kindergarten is intended to have two sections at Memorial?
Yep, and at Essex.
Okay.
First grade, three sections, Memorial, two sections, Essex.
And so is this typically what, is that what it's been for the number of sections each year all along?
No, at one point we had, we were up to nineteen sections in total. At Memorial, this actually should read fifteen for this year. Nineteen is the high of the typical in how we built the school.
Okay, so are we?
Sorry, nineteen is average class size. Sorry, I got my stats confused. The average class size is accurate. This chart represents how many sections or classrooms exist and typically Essex has twelve and Memorial has had as high as nineteen, averaging three per grade level. So we're low in some sections of Memorial. That number's down.
Okay, so is it going down from this year to next year or is this staying consistent from this year?
Consistent.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
So Pam, when we look at those numbers and the projections down at the enrollment
Yep.
projections, you know, you've got some capacity there. And I just wonder if you could just tell us what the strategy is over time, right? You're going to open Memorial School next year, see what happens, you know, how that shakes out. But.
Where are you seeing the capacity?
Well, if you've got seventy-three total students, right?
Yep.
In kindergarten for the district.
Yep.
You know, that looks like you have some capacity. I mean.
Well, the benchmark size for kindergarten is seventeen to nineteen.
So maybe my capacity question. At what point do you?
I didn't hear that.
We, so we have to go down here and look at our benchmark sizes.
Yeah.
So if your benchmark is seventeen to nineteen, you're over benchmark already at Memorial and you're on benchmark at Essex. So there really isn't excess capacity.
So it opens up in middle school, right? That's where you've got, but even there it's.
But it's not because the middle school was designed for about a hundred to a hundred and ten students per grade level, the physical space.
Okay.
So about, you know, because you've got the the static five classrooms in each pod. You break out a hundred kids to a hundred and ten kids, you're at your twenty to twenty-two.
If you were to look at that list, which is the ideal class size? To seventh grade?
For us? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Fifth grade, seventh grade.
So can I ask a question? I guess it's related. I didn't mean to speak over. I thought it was the same.
Nope, no problem.
So what is the determining, and I'm just curious because I don't have the history, what is the determining factor in terms of opening up a third section and then potentially taking in kids or not? At what point do you decide to do that? Just when both sections are over that amount?
So we haven't opened another section since the early twenty-teens. I think back when Caroline first came on the committee and when I got here and we were, we were oversubscribed because we were starting to push. I think the formula was twenty-five percent above benchmark. So we were starting to hit the twenty-eight mark in elementary classrooms.
Okay. That was my kid's class and it was Essex and it was when they had a big, they had big classes in kindergarten and then they added a section. So in Essex, because you have kids at us, so at Essex, there are usually two classes in every grade. And then it was a big deal because we got a third classroom for the first grade. And then that was a little bubble and it moved. And so there were three sections in first grade and then there were three sections in second grade and three sections in third grade. And then in fourth grade, we just, the district decided that it was okay and they could have bigger classes. I think somebody moved or something. And then we had like twenty-four kids in a class. And that's been part of that bubble that is now in tenth grade. It's a little lower now, but it was always a big grade.
The top of that bubble is actually this current twelfth grade class. That was the bubble and the bottom of the bubble was probably at one point now the tenth grade class and now it's gone down to the current ninth grade class. But yeah, Teresa, to answer your question, there's sort of a fine line because if you have enough kids in two sections to justify, or you have too many kids in two sections, you have to have enough overage in those two sections to justify a full third section. So that's kind of where we were that year that Pam and Sarah are describing. You have to have enough critical mass to make, or you have to have enough kids to make a critical mass in three sections, not just two and then some leftover. So it was a tricky, it was a tricky dance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's actually not ideal to have a class of like less than sixteen kids. It's kind of not enough kids in the class.
No, that's what, and that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around just a little bit is, is again with balancing this idea of school choice. And if we're trying to keep it at, you know, a certain amount where it has peaked in the past. So I'm just, I'm just trying to get a broader understanding. And honestly, I very naively somehow thought that Essex had two classrooms in every grade and Manchester had three, just because that's been the extent of the grades that I've known. So that's just what I, that is honestly what I thought.
And I would say that is the historic for Memorial and they're a little bit on the lower side. When I first, and we've gone up and run fours and threes at Memorial. So when I, my, I think my very first school committee meeting, there was a very, they weren't angry, but they were very passionate group of parents who were concerned about the class size at the elementary level. I think it was Caroline's grade level. And why she got on the school committee and you too, Shannon. So they were the ones, I'm going to tell you, the parents are usually raising the red flag before the numbers support us going to the next level. But we have this chart and this is actually a John Willis creation that takes us out to the three to four classrooms. So what we do is we color code it and we run it against the benchmark span here. So we're always looking to be within seventeen to nineteen, but we will go up to twenty or twenty-one in K. We have a T A. When it starts to get higher than that, you look at, you know, when do you hit critical mass for three classrooms? And when you hit it, and when you start to edge up to maybe just two below benchmark, then you'll flip over. So that's kind of how he places teachers year to year and how we make the decision whether or not we don't have enough teachers and need to add one.
Yeah, it's not an exact science.
Not at all.
Of like a feel, you can kind of feel what's going on. And I will say, when you pile in the school choice issue, it becomes a little bit more tricky and, and you know, Pam just alluded to the situation we had, you know, there were some kids added, I think there were school choice additions and then that coincided with like twelve kids moving into the district in one particular grade over one summer. So the school choice thing kind of, you know, became a bit of a hot button. But who's to know that that's going to happen? So I think in populating some of this extra capacity with school choice, that's where it gets real tricky because you don't know what's going to happen over the summer.
And the principals also weigh in heavily on makeup of the class because at times you could have a class of fifteen, but because of the way it's made up, it could, it could be just enough and you can justify keeping it there. The same as you could have a class of twenty-five and it could be quite manageable given the makeup in that year. So to Shannon's point, inexact science, but a lot of study. I think we know, we know where there is space and comfortable space. But it does make me nervous because we've had those summers where we just wake up and realize we have a lot more kids moving in than we ever anticipated.
Thank you for helping understand this better. All right, what's up next? Budget.
We need the vote.
We need to vote on this. We need to vote. So do I have a motion to approve the school choice plan?
I'll move to Warnock.
I'll second Erdman.
All right, Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon? Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we approve the school choice plan and next we will hear about the budget.
Thank you. Are we up to budget?
We are up.
Oh, so Avi, do you want to speak to the E and D and the confirmation vote?
This could be one of my shortest and most rapid presentations ever. We've already voted the fiscal twenty-two budget. But it was in anticipation of the Department of Revenue making official art excess and deficiency for fiscal year twenty, the preceding fiscal year. Technically speaking, for the vote using those funds to be illegal, the school committee must affirm the use of that E and D after that certification happens, which was in the first few days of March after the budget was adopted. So we kind of had forecasts telling us where it would land. The forecast came in really very close. You know, very, you know, few thousand dollars away. So we just now to revoke the intent to use three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of excess and deficiency funds as a revenue source from F Y twenty E and D to support the F Y twenty-two budget.
Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that.
Shannon made the motion.
Second, Eric.
Eric seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon? Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the second confirmation vote we have listed may be better served to wait until we have one of the town meetings under our belt. But typically, we've already budgeted for non-mede personnel at two and a half percent for next year. And we typically just ask you to confirm that before we start putting out salary and appointment letters for the next year. So we can either do it tonight or we can hold until next meeting or, well, we would have to wait. We need to do it before the June twenty-second meeting. I mean, we need to do it before Manchester Town Meeting, so we'll need to do it by June second.
Okay, can we just table that until the next?
Sure.
Until the eighteenth meeting?
And then I think we can jump right into the capital improvements.
Awesome.
Great, thank you. So it's initially started out with a desire to kind of update the school committee on one specific item, but the more Pam and I were talking about some of the other plans for capital investments and use of reserves, the more we kind of realized that a lot of this does center around some of our plans that we've talked about for Essex Elementary in terms of extending the life of the school. Now that it is, you know, the oldest building in the district and knowing as we've said that we want to make sure the educational experience has parity as well as the educational environment, which can be both, you know, facilities and, you know, some of the infrastructure. So all these things kind of started to come together and we thought it would be a good time to update the school committee on something we've already talked about and let you know where it is, but also kind of make sure that we're still in agreement on some of the things that we've said we wanted to move forward with. And I think you've probably remembered seeing in our slides that we've presented about, you know, what are our thoughts on reserve fund usage? And why they're so important to maintain, why we want to be wary of the COVID costs and the amounts that are in excess of CARES grants and why we want to also be wary of the reserves going as a revenue source to fund the operating budget. So I will kind of try to run through some of these things. And the only item on this slide related to playground is that I don't, is the one that we've talked about so much. I don't have a new update on that other than to say that it's on time, on budget and it's, you know, you know, going very well. And, you know, we anticipate, as I said last time, with that project being wrapped up towards the end of May or maybe, you know, towards the end of the school year in June, depending on how the last pieces come into play, but no real changes there. So we're not planning to talk about that. That's a three hundred thousand dollar equipment cost plus, you know, fifty thousand dollars of other site costs that we need to take care of to first take it down and get the site ready on top of that. So if we can move into the instructional technology side, I thought it would be useful to just remind people when we talk about COVID costs and COVID technology embedded in that is the fact that we have continued to migrate to a student to device ratio of one to one. That's something that we've always wanted to do, but we've had a lot of shared carts by grade level in the past. Obviously, moving to remote instruction required us to, you know, have a plan to make sure every student could access the curriculum from home. And so that's why we accelerated that. Also with the rollout at the Memorial School Project, you know, we knew that we would have that funding from the much bigger capital budget with that project that we wanted to make sure we were equalizing across the other elementary school at Essex Elementary. So there's no new news here, but just as a reminder for those who may not have seen it in a while or if you're newer, generally we use iPads for K through two and Chromebooks for three through five. You know, we're introducing kids to devices and different ways of using different apps and the touchscreens are really very helpful at the younger ages. By the time we're moving to grades three through five, we're starting to get ready for the introduction to how things run in the middle school where we're on a you know, Google learning management system. And so the Chromebooks have really come in handy in that regard. And these are some of the Uh, and these are some of the, the monies that we've spent this year um, through district budget, you know, as well as through some of the, the CARES dollars. And as I've mentioned in the past, we tried to make sure we don't have a situation where money we have today turns into a funding cliff tomorrow. One of the ways we do that is instead of just buying everything all at once and then waiting for it to, you know, eventually reach the end of its useful life and, and saying, oh, we have a major, you know, uh, bill coming due. Instead, we spread the costs over the useful life of the asset. And so typically, Chromebooks, iPads, we tend to lease over a three-year life. The interest costs are really pretty minimal. That's the one cost of doing that, but it's um, in the single digits from a percentage standpoint. So it really uh, ends up being very cost effective and it does ensure that our budget is as level as it can be. And then uh, I do think it's worth bringing attention to the fact that um, one of the big investments that we still have to do uh, at Essex Elementary is to update all the interactive boards. And based on the exact unit that we put into the Memorial School, which is really just a, a new version of what we had in the past. We're looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh, rough order of magnitude to be spent out of the reserve fund. The reason we use that out of reserve compared to some of the other items that come out of the budget is they have a much, much longer useful life. And so for that reason, um, we think that the, the reserve uses a little more appropriate. And so um, that's actually a purchase order that we want to get in very quickly due to some of the uh, supply chain things. If you follow supply chain issues with um, either semiconductors or uh, glass, which is an issue with these. We do not want to wait till the summer to order these. We want to get them now. So I, I, you know, unless there are any concerns through the end of this presentation, I'm happy to answer questions. I just want to uh, indicate that that is something we definitely intend to do for every classroom, just like we have at the Memorial School. We have them already at Essex Elementary, but this would be the upgrade consistent with uh, what we have at Memorial. So next slide. Uh, this is where we get into some of the more nuts and bolts stuff. And I just want to caveat this first by saying, you know, some of this information was uh, stuff that Steve Quiatek and I worked on together. Steve really was the kind of um, vision behind a lot of this. And as we get into the very technical items, you know, my job is to make sure I understand it as well as, you know, what the financial implications are on the replacement uh, asset cycle uh, concepts as well. Uh, as well as the, you know, return on investment, you know, why we need it and how it supports our program. But uh, I will do my best to answer the technical questions. I'm going to try not to get too far into the weeds on those items. The reason we're bringing it up now and the reason uh, it didn't come up sooner is a lot of it was based off of our anticipated reimbursement from a federal program known as E-Rate. E-Rate is a federal um, reimbursement of about forty percent that is made available for certain technology investments for schools and libraries. And we've used it in the past to offset some of our bigger ticket items, like when we did a, a wireless upgrade at the elementary schools a few years back. That will probably be a capital project that, you know, will come due again in the coming years. So uh, we just received word uh, that we, the pro, uh, the projects that we have here are going to be eligible for forty percent E-Rate reimbursement, which means that the district would own the sixty percent. So we'll talk about the fiber optic installation of the net, network switch gear. Right, so with fiber optics, um, this is a, a big ticket project of a hu, about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of which E-Rate is planning to pick up uh, forty percent, leaving seventy-three thousand dollars to the district. And um, first, we use fiber optics to provide uh, internet service into our district. It comes into the middle school, high school. Because of the short distance between uh, the high school and Memorial, we were able to create a connection from the high school, you know, inward gateway to Memorial without spending a dime, without having to go through E-Rate because we just eliminated some of the costs that we have on an operating side like modems uh, and phone line connections where we pay a phone bill for that service and instead can all run it through the fiber that's coming into the district. So that was a project that paid for itself. Whereas um, the distance to connect uh, the middle school, high school hub all the way to Essex Elementary, it's, you can see the map here and how much of a longer run it is. You know, whereas that, you know, project was, I think, maybe eight to ten thousand dollars. This is a much, much larger distance. So it's, this is one-time money from E-Rate. It's kind of a use it or lose it type of situation. I think we would be wise to take advantage of the fifty thousand dollars that the federal government is willing to put in place here. This is their way of trying to make sure that communities all over the country have access to high-speed internet access. So that's what it makes sense for. Uh, and you can see that we get um, a whole bunch of lines, twelve bundled lines. We only need to initially, we have opportunity to expand. Part of what this is about is continuing to evolve our network in a way whereas usage of uh, internet and uh, data increases, which it certainly has done over the years. Think back to when we had some of the questions about our Wi-Fi at the middle school, high school and challenges we had. Generally, the amount of bandwidth that you continue to need does continue to increase year after year. I'm not sure that this is something where, you know, because we have modems coming into Essex Elementary already that kind of counterbalance for this and provide high-speed access. I don't know that students would suddenly notice a, a, a major difference. But it does allow us to continue to have bandwidth to support future forward activity, a lot more devices, continual expansion. We're obviously using a ton of video over our network, as well as things like uh, some of the work we do with the towns over um, you know, with first responders, police and fire, our security cameras, software that can um, provide video access to first responders whenever necessary. It replaces antiquated uh, copper lines, et cetera. And there will be even, um, there will be, if, if we were to do it on our own, there is a payback because we would, just like with Memorial, get rid of the modems, you get rid of the MPLS phone line service that we are paying for uh, and use this instead. That because the cost is so much greater, it would probably take about six to eight years to make that payback. It would still be, I think, a pretty good case to make. But with the E-Rate money coming in, I think it makes a lot of sense. So that's a, a very quick uh, overview. There's a lot more information in here that I'm not going to get into extreme detail. If we can hit the next slide, please. So uh, this is where we talked about um, yep. And I think we're, these are all hits on, on things that we've talked about by uh, increasing our modem speeds, maintaining the infrastructure for internet as well as MPLS and phone. So the one thing that has come up, and I know there was a question earlier about um, CARES Act updates with the towns. We've been talking about that and one kind of parallel alternative option that has come up is that we have heard from the town of Manchester that they have uh, their own interest in this line going in as well. We talked about how they're up to twelve lines that we could turn on with no additional cost. And for them, uh, they're looking for a, a fiber optic uh, connection from Manchester into Essex because um, that could enable them to connect to the town of Essex where they could participate in a lot of regional programs that are very data intensive. That includes the Danvers Regional IT Center that is part of a regionalization between many north shore communities around running IT. Uh, there's been regional dispatch for uh, first responders and nine-one-one that comes out of uh, Middletown. And there's even talk about other types of regional services such as shared software coming through as well. And so that, you know, if you've been paying attention to some of the regionalization conversations between the two towns that really aren't as directly involved with the district, you know that these are increasing ways that the uh, the member communities are saving money. And I, and I will say that those savings have in certain years passed on to us because when we've been in a type uh, budget situation, sometimes those savings have been part of the reason why uh, one town or the other have been able to help support our budget. Uh, but in this case, I think the town of Manchester has expressed a preliminary interest in helping to fund a portion of the district share, that seventy-three thousand. We haven't um, exactly come to an agreement on what that would be, but there's no additional cost for us to allow them to use the line. Um, the, the line would benefit us regardless. It's something we probably should do sooner or later, but the ability to get the E-Rate funds really would require us to put the project in place for this summer. So um, we would like to get the school committee's approval to move forward with it with the seventy-three thousand dollars coming out of reserves. Knowing that there could be a portion of that and it could be a significant portion that would be offset by the town of Manchester pending a finalization of some agreement of how it would be used. I don't believe that initially when we put this proposal together, we were not expecting any contribution from Manchester. So I do believe the six to eight-year payback benefits us regardless. Um, and so this was really a project that we considered initially for our own usage. But I think having that potential extra um, funding contribution, whatever it ends up being, just brings that payback period down even further. So uh, that's uh, a quick overview to that project. And given the price tag of this one, and I think, I, I think it might make sense for us to pause with any questions here as long as we can get back to some of the other items that are on here, if that's okay.
Does anybody have questions for Avi?
Yeah, quick one, Avi. This is really good. I, I'd be curious because I know Brendan at um, Town of Essex is very um, IT savvy. What, what was his response or reaction to this? That, I assume he thought this was a good thing?
Yeah, when we talked about it uh, at the collaborate, we've talked about it over the past several months, but it's really come to fruition now that we heard back from E-Rate, which we just heard a couple um, weeks ago. Both towns are very much on board. This is kind of what I call a potential win-win-win. And I, and I don't want to overly enthusiastic, but the reason I say that is I think it would be good for the district for the reasons I've outlined, talked about what the benefit to Manchester is. And I think bringing this into the, you know, Essex uh, town as well, really allows us to have Essex Elementary running off the exact same type of a network. Uh, again, they can match the speeds through the modems currently and the MPLS service, but I think having the same backbone district-wide, I think, benefits the uh, the Essex community significantly as well. So he was very much supportive.
Thank you, Avi. I think the last time, it's rare that you are enthusiastic about spending. And I think the last time was the solar on the high school roof, which I think has proved to be a winner. So um, I appreciate you finding these opportunities. This one sounds good.
Are we keeping questions just to the fiber right now? Is that correct?
It's up to you. Um, I have a couple other updates. I just want to run through their smaller price tags. Um, but I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Sarah, yes? Okay. So I actually was wondering a little bit about the smart boards, um, the smart board upgrade and knowing what we're looking at with, with, you know, the reserve usage and everything that we've been talking about. And so I'm just interested to know if there's any more detail and maybe this is a question for Julie, I'm not sure. But what is actually the difference in, in this upgrade? Obviously, we want educational parity and make sure that everyone has the same access to um, things between the two schools, but is this something that is definitely needed versus a desire? I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about what we're getting in that upgrade and, and is that something that's?
Yeah, the old, the devices that are in Essex Elementary, I believe, are eight to ten years old. Uh, and so this is just, you know, it's one of those things with technology that at some point you're going to want to make that upgrade. Is it absolutely necessary that it happens right now? It is not. Uh, but um, I think with technology, in my opinion, uh, when you get past a certain number of years, you start to notice the differences. Um, and uh, certainly to have one school operating on new devices and another one on ten-year-old devices, I think would be inconsistent with our approach overall to how we roll out technology. So I, I would have more concerns about what it says about our, you know, the level of experience that we have for both schools. The devices are about the same company. They're an upgraded version, but certainly in, in an eight to ten years, quite a bit changes uh, in terms of just think about your laptop or any of your computer technology, you know, and I think that that gives you a good picture for it.
I think we're having an increasing compatibility issue between the laptop purchased and the ability to stream to the device. And there is um, an ongoing need for tech support to just do the basic classroom function. So that started to emerge now as we've been back in hybrid and in person. And I believe, I, don't quote me on this, I believe they're no longer going to be supporting upgrades to the active board. So that gap between what the teacher's using to project and what the, what the device can do is going to continue to expand rapidly.
That's very helpful. That's exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you. Guys have other questions for Avi, especially about the fiber optics before we go on?
Avi, I said one. Any other like ancillary costs of the project, like firewall or, or um, like the, the circuits to support it or anything?
Uh, well, so yes, here are the switches. Um, and um, so with the switches, this was the next one I wanted to bring up. The switches are not required to do the upgrade. So that's the first answer to your question. No, it's not required, but we are bringing the switch project forward too, to let you know primarily because it's part of the same um, capital improvement uh, um, grant program that's coming through E-Rate. So they're going to pick up um, uh, that forty percent as well of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars for Essex switches. Again, just a bit of brief background, if you follow the technology budget for um, the Memorial School, we did put in new switch gear. Same vendor, Extreme is the solution there. It comes with a lifetime guarantee, which some products do, so many do not. And so uh, that's a warranty, not just a guarantee. So that means that um, it really does solve your uh, solution on a multi-year basis. And so um, we put that upgrade into the Memorial School budget and we got the forty percent from E-Rate. We're now getting the forty percent for this project as well. And um, I think, you know, to have the the same backbone, I think involves not just the fiber optics, but the switches as well. And for those who aren't as familiar with this, switches are really just network gear that allows you to, you know, connect all your devices that run on the network together and to move data between the devices. Sort of the way a router does for internet. This is how data moves through the network. And so um, this is something that we would, you know, we've um, we have upgraded the, the middle school, high school switches as well uh, in prior years through our normal operating budget. But getting the E-Rate contribution was great and we, like I said, I think we want to make sure that we're having the same level of infrastructure. This is something that we are going to need to do sooner or later um, with switches. It really is a normal item and it, it's not even something that I would typically bring up uh, because normally what I would do is probably just lease that cost of the sixteen thousand over the five-year useful life. But because uh, it's all happening at once, I thought I would just update you on how we're continuing to invest in the backbone. Happy to take any questions on this as well. And you can see the existing ones are about seven to ten years, depending on the actual pieces and components we've bought them over time. All right. So moving forward to the next piece, um, it's just some of the facilities updates because since we are talking about some of the ways we're keeping, you know, uh, Essex uh, rolling. Facilities is obviously a big part of that. And uh, we do have uh, an application that we're putting in with the town of Essex. They've been amazing about helping us to access the Green Communities Grant Program, which is really a town uh, grant option, not a regional school district grant option, but it's state funding that helps towns to lower their uh, energy footprint and become more energy efficient. And as one of the larger, you know, facilities in the town, in both towns, you know, our energy footprint definitely has an impact on towns uh, overall state of greenness, so to speak. So um, you know, we've done several projects in the past that we've talked about. Totalling several hundred thousand dollars, all of which has been a hundred percent free to the district. And so this would be the third round of funding. If you remember back to some of our COVID discussions, we've talked about the con, digital control systems that we use for HVAC that um, have been modernized at the middle school, high school with that new building. Same thing with the Memorial School at that new building. And we have a large portion of Essex covered through the first phases of the Green Communities Grant. We want to finish that project out. Just because it's more energy efficient, it would be free to us. It would have a payback of probably, you know, three to six years if we did it ourselves. But again, it would be completely free if the grant is approved. We would find that out sometime over the summer. It'd be a project we would probably try to get done. Most likely um, over the coming summer. We, we wanted to do it this summer, but we can't commit to getting on the schedule of contractors until we find out whether we get the award. So there's nothing really to approve here, but it's just a continued look at how we're very fortunate to have very good partnerships with the town of Essex on this uh, and how it's continuing to just keep the building modernizing in a way that is sensible because a lot of these investments are still beneficial for the next, let's say, five to fifteen years while we're awaiting a longer-term solution for Essex Elementary. And you know, while we're talking about facilities, it's probably worth mentioning, like we always do, the boiler remains a pressing concern. We had a hundred and thousand dollar item in our multi-year uh, reserve usage uh, projections that Pam has kind of previewed at previous school committee meetings. We definitely think that that's something we're going to be looking at. And as we look ahead also to uh, the fall, when we're going to be moving into a completed Memorial School, finishing up the um, the, the site work and the traffic flow and the landscaping, you know, with that project closed, I think our attention is definitely going to be looking towards a statement of interest um, with MSBA for Essex Elementary. The school is going to be um, you know, I think over sixty years old. Um, and so, uh, you know, we already put one statement of interest in because we thought it was appropriate And so, you know, we already put one statement of interest in because we thought it was appropriate back when we did that for Memorial. So I think that's just still something we have to do. It doesn't predetermine what the solution will be. We would still, obviously, if accepted by MSBA, go through a very rigorous process of seeing what is a prudent approach, and you have to consider multiple options from renovation all the way to new buildings, et cetera. But to do that, I do think it might be time to kind of dust off some of the numbers we have in the Habib report, which we last received from them around 2013. They were, if you remember, instrumental in not only getting MSBA to be able to understand a quantification of why we thought the Memorial School was such a pressing concern, but also to help our communities understand why we thought it was a good common sense to invest in a new building instead of putting money down down the path of, you know, investments that don't really have very good payback. So that's something I think we can look forward to. Nothing to approve tonight, but just want to get that, keep that everyone's front of mind. And then the last item is security. We've talked about it. I just want to bring it up tonight. Again, there's nothing to approve tonight about it. But part of keeping Essex Elementary, you know, rolling along with the rest of our district, we've always had a parity approach to security at every building. We'd have that currently. We are in the process of rolling out what would be the first upgrade to the level of security system that we had with the middle school, high school construction that we rolled out three years after to the elementary schools. Now that we're building the Memorial School, once that is done, and that's happening in the current weeks and months, we're going to have a very clear sense of exactly how the upgrades will roll forward to the other buildings. So it will, it's mostly going to be a software upgrade of our infrastructure for cameras, et cetera. There will be maybe some additional cameras that we have that we want to put in place, but most of that hardware we currently have and is still in pretty good shape. So just keep that in mind. That's something we will probably bring to school committee. You know, over the summer, I would say. So that's my my Essex Elementary capital investments proposal update, and I'm just trying to keep you in the loop of some of the things that are going to be with the E-rate grants and make sure that there are no questions and see if everyone's on board with the fiber. As well as any questions or concerns about the switches and and just let you know that we are intending to move forward unless there are concerns with the use of reserves for the active board, smart board upgrade at Essex Elementary as well.
So Avi, do you need a vote on any of this, or do you just want some questions and feedback?
Start with the questions and feedback, and then I think we would, I think it would be good to vote your support, just so we have it on record, especially since some of this will come out of reserves for the smart board and fiber purchase. And in the switches while we're on them. And I think prior to doing the security installation, any type of upgrades there, I would be coming back with an update on some of those dollars.
Okay, questions for Avi? Ken's raising his
A quick statement. I don't know if I'm being redundant or missed it earlier or without earlier, but I also just have to recognize you, Avi, for, I think this the coverage of the green grants that you got for the Essex Elementary School heating refurb was the last positive article I remember reading about the district in the GD Times. So thank you for that. Again, appreciate this.
I really like the way we're making every effort to keep Essex up to date, even though the building's a little bit older, but we know that all the things happening inside are just as modern and shiny as as they can be.
And a huge shout out to Jason and Steve Hunt. I mean, they are, they're the ones who are doing a lot of this work on being there. And I know if you are, if you work in Essex Elementary, you see them there all the time. Really, they are all over that building, and it's been great because this, the middle school, high school was our first new building. It took a ton of time to do the maintenance. And building projects, obviously, very time consuming, but it's been great to see them really taking ownership over, making that building the best it can be. And so I'm very appreciative of all their work as well. And I want to thank Steve and John Quiatec for all of their help on the tech side. I mean, I might be the spokesperson, but they've really done a great job to help set us up to be very future focused, and we're really very indebted to both of them.
Awesome. Anybody else have other questions?
I have a couple comments.
Thanks, Andy.
I would do want to thank you, Avi, for and Pam for keeping your promise to Essex and Manchester voters. When we built the or voted on the Memorial School project, we did promise to maintain parity between Essex Elementary and Memorial School in certain terms of software security and safety. So thank you for that. Second, I also want to thank you for collaborating with our two town administrators to get grants, because that is getting us a lot of stuff that we would not be able to afford, or we would be raiding our our reserve funds for. So thank you for that. And I just want to also have everybody be aware of the fact that, you know, there may be money coming up from the federal government, maybe, that we should be lever, you know, if we could, should try to take advantage of those opportunities when they arise. And then I also had two things. Site, I would love to have a site visit of Essex Elementary. I know I will no longer be on the committee after the 10th, but I'll be on the SBC, and I think I always appreciated going through that building with not only you and the facilities director, but the SBC, people like Andy Oldeman are really great to go through that building with and kind of point out some things that we could look at. And I know that Andy has looked at that building and has some ideas, and I think Gordon is also really good about that. So I would love for us to have a site visit of Essex Elementary to just see where are we right now, because as Pam pointed at a couple meetings ago. You know, there's this tendency in Essex, and I have to claim that I'm guilty of it too, to say, oh, the school's fine. We can put it off. We can put it off. And as you see, it's costing us more money. And at one point, do upgrades and, you know, putting nice new stuff in an old failing building start to be a negative return. So I would love to take a visit and also just get a sense. I think that this committee is a new committee and will need that they will benefit from hearing some of the voices of people who've been around for a while. And so could we arrange that?
We certainly can.
Thank you.
I think Especially when you get to that kind of concept of a statement of interest, I think, you know, that's really just around the corner. So.
Well, I just want to give you a heads up that I'm on this, the strategic planning committee, and one of the goals has been, you know, we're trying to look at infrastructure. And the elementary school is one of those things, and there is, I think, a difference of opinion about when we should go. Some people are saying within five, some people are saying 10 years out. So having some facts and data to back up where that's that estimation should be would be helpful sooner rather than later.
We can get it done before mid-June.
Thank you.
That sounds like a fun field
The visit, not the Habib updates. I thought that's what the eyebrows, the eyebrows went up again. I know Andy always makes fun of my eyebrows. Great.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind. One is a comment and one is a question. The comment goes back to the technology. I think you're really smart for jumping on all the technology upgrades because the supply chain is indeed a dumpster fire everywhere, cars, tech, you name it. And then with regard, you've mentioned the Habib report a couple of times. Oh, wait, let me turn my little hand off here. The Habib report dusting up the numbers, are you going to need to do a new Habib report since it's about 10 years old, or will the existing one suffice to file the SOI?
I think we would be wise to get updated numbers for an SOI at 10 years, like, you know, it's 2013. I think a lot of the work was done in 2012. I think that would be in our best interests to get better numbers.
Thinking out loud a little bit, is it also worth including subbing out the Memorial School but putting in the middle high school, so we have a clearer roadmap as that building starts to turn, getting close to 15 years old?
That wouldn't be a bad idea, because it would give you kind of a maintenance, you know, plan, an idea of maybe where to put those dollars. And what's more near term than not. So yeah, I don't, I don't think that'd be a bad idea. But then again, I won't be here.
It was more of a question than an advocacy. Is there benefit in having an assessment done? To provide us a roadmap?
Maybe we should ask Jason.
But it sounds like from what, I would say definitely yes. But again, I won't be here. But what Avi just said was having the Habib report when we filed the SOI for both schools, that was critical, because it really laid out where we were in terms of, you know, the throwing good money after bad.
It just may be helpful to have that, like, we're going to be pushing 20 years on the roof of the high school when we end this decade. So having that in part of a plan that's laid out and assessed may help us make the case when we start to talk about some of our financial needs and our capital planning. It's just a thought. This is not my area of expertise, so it may be redundant to documents we already have from the building project and the maintenance schedule.
Say from my perspective, I don't think we have documents. There's a lot of, there's a maintenance plan that came with it, but that's different than just taking a look at where, you know, it's like they call that a facility condition index is the kind of common term. I think it's good to get those every now and then. I think I would be mindful to not have it be a enormous project for the middle school, high school, because it is still pretty young, but I do think getting some type of a look at some of the bigger component trees, just so we can plan out, you know, you know, there are some aspects of a building that you intentionally don't expect to go the full 50 years, and that's just the way buildings are designed, and those are the ones we want to make sure we have on the capital plan, even if it's seven or eight years from now, because as we know from our multi-year budget planning, you know, we are looking three or four years out with with our reserve usage. So I just think it's always important to know what's around the corner.
I think this is all a really good idea, but it's getting a little bit late, and I'd like to bring us back to our discussion on the table of the fiber optics and the current capital investments that we're considering. So does anybody have any other questions for Avi or comments about the items on the table right now?
Does Avi have a specific motion he needs us to make?
I think it would be to approve the use of reserves for funding the active boards at Essex Elementary and the non-E-rate share of the fiber optic and switches project as outlined.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you, Avi.
Annie, that was
Sorry, I know it's getting late. I want to say one very last piece of good news.
Absolutely. No, I just, I felt like we were going down a little
So, yeah, and I will make it super quick. I did hear from our facilities team that it looks like that capital investment we had to make due to some flooding that happened at the old memorial site related to the burner and some of the circulator pump that we kind of put in is about thirty seven thousand dollars that we had to spend earlier in the year. We will be able to salvage some of that equipment and move it over to Essex Elementary as well. So whereas the whole boiler, I don't think at this point can be salvaged. That was a two or three year ago. It was just really nice to see our our facilities team, Steve and Jason and and our contractor looking to find ways to save that. So I just wanted to let you know that that return will live on.
That is awesome. Kudos to them. Great. Anything else on facilities? Technology updates, comments? No? Okay. Pam, do you have anything else you want to talk about?
No, I think we're all set.
I did want to, it's not on the agenda, but one thing that we often do at the end of the year, and I think I'd really love to do it this year, is the school committee self-evaluation, which is not a huge big deal, but it's, it's just sort of a survey, and I was hoping that maybe Pam could send that out to all of us so we could just think about how we operate as a committee. And Annie, I know it's your last meeting, but if you have valuable insights to share, that would be helpful for us moving forward. That would be awesome if you don't mind filling out another piece of paper for me.
I criticize everybody else.
That's it. Any school committee comments as we wrap up the night?
I do have one.
Yay.
Just, just to remind, and I'm sure we all know this, but that we need to be talking about the the subcommittee divisions again, just because it feels like so long since we've met, but as we have our new members join us, that we need to be all thinking about that again. As we talked about before, and then just a final, thank you, Annie. Thanks for helping out this very green person navigate this year. At all times, you've made yourself more than accessible to to all of us, including all the constituents, and thank you.
Great. Happy to help.
This is Eric. I actually just had two very quick comments too. One, also, just thank you to Annie for all your hard work and for being a great resource for me. And then my second comment was, since Annie's leaving, I think we might be able to adjust our meeting to six to seven PM from six to eight PM. So wanted to see if anyone.
You're a smart ass. Throw in the darts at the I like that.
I love where you live, okay?
Where do you think Teresa learned to ask so many closing questions?
I was, I was told, ask all your questions. I was. Always, always.
Annie, just kidding, Annie.
I know.
It's like the end of an era.
Oh, Jesus.
All right. It's the end of Annie 2.0, because this was the second time around.
I know. I'm not coming back after this.
And a school committee and the building committee at the same time, came back for a second round of that.
I know, I know. Great committees, though. All great people. Honestly, this is the best, these are the best volunteer jobs I've ever had. So it's a testament to you guys and your commitment to the district and to your kids and to our community. So really, it's a great committee. It's worth it. I think that, you know, people who are listening, it's, it's great to sit and make public comments and to make comments on social media. It would be great if you stepped up and wanted to serve on this committee or any other committee. So I think I probably should stop talking.
That's how you got your start.
That's his, yeah. Caroline Wells, I pissed her off at that, that school choice meeting. That's how she joined the committee.
People become motivated to join for all different reasons, and it's all good. All good. We welcome a lot of fans and, yeah.
All right. All right. I'm gonna go.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I just motioned it.
So moved.
Oh, you did? Oh, Annie, okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Second, Warnock.
Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes, bye, Annie.
Bye, guys. I'm going to harass you next meeting.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes, Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Good night, everybody.
Night. See you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annie.
Thank you.